The bewitching hour has come. We've got everybody back downstairs getting ready to turn on the switches and bells, the whistles, and everything like that. I'll call the January 22nd, 2020 work session to order. And I'll let the ministry reflect that all of the board members are here except Linda Cole. She is out of town. I also recognize the fact we have a number of staff with us tonight and a roomful of distinguished audience, some of which we may hear from here sooner rather than later as we move forward. We do have the minutes of January 8th in front of us. I'll ask if there is a motion to approve those minutes.
Move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? I think the only discussion I would like to add, and my mistake, Lisa, is that we would add that prior to the work session, the board did meet to review priorities and goals for DPW Engineering, Planning Development Services, Communications, and DPW.
Okay.
So if everyone's in agreement to that addition, then I'd ask for those in favor. I?
I.
Opposed? Okay, so those minutes are approved. So thank you for that. I will start to indicate that prior to tonight's work session, the board did meet to review priorities and goals for Tax Receiver Town Clerk Building, Fire Marshals, Zoning, and PCTV. So thank you for those departments. Monthly reports are all up to date. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have a possible couple of guests. So we're going to start with Dr. Howitt for discussion regarding development of a 60-unit apartment building at 1211 Empire Boulevard. I would invite Dr. Howitt to the table, his engineer, Jess Sudol. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Costello if you would like to add any additional opening comments.
Thank you, Tony. Dr. Howitt and Jess came in last year, mid-last year, to talk to the board about the possibility of developing an apartment building on the site of 1211 Empire Boulevard. At that time, they were wrestling with the idea of possibly not developing a portion of the property that is currently tabled before the planning board and has been for a period of time. That includes the development of 33 townhomes that start to leave where they are now heading south towards the top of the hill at Old Westfall and Woodhaven Drive. He was looking to develop this site in lieu of doing that at this point in time. And he came back recently, and I think I sent everything to you, identifying a revision. It was one time a long linear building. The board had some concern for that just because of its proximity to the roadway and the slope area. Jess was good enough to go back in and redesign it to accommodate some of the board's concerns. Tony and I, you noticed that your email was probably back in October. Tony and I thought it was appropriate to wait until the new board got into place because there was so much stuff going on with the Danieli site that we didn't want to inundate the board at any given time. So that email that you received was from October. So we thought it was an appropriate time to bring Dr. Howitt in now so that you can start to review his proposal and give him some feedback as to what you'd like to see as part of that process. So with that, I'm going to leave it up to you and Jess to kind of bring the board up to speed with what you've done.
Sure. And good evening. My name is Jess Sudol. I'm a vice president with Passero Associates. We're the civil engineers for the project. As Mr. Costello accurately pointed out, we've been out at this for several years now. The project site, this is actually an old site plan. I'll eventually show you the new one. But the site is down by the bay, right on the other side of the inlet. This is the formal, former Bezos and Mario's. This is K2 Brewing here. And this is the current site that we're looking at developing, which is in the LaSalle Landing District, which of course this board has jurisdiction over. Previous proposals included some buildings down in this area as well as the development of another 10 to 14 acres of townhomes that extended all the way to the south.
Jess, I'm going to interrupt you just for a minute because there may be some folks that do have an interest in taking a look at that. So I'm going to ask that, and I'll get you a couple of clips, if you don't mind.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you, Cos. And that way, folks have the opportunity to see that in addition to the board.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cos.
I might use both of them.
Okay.
So while Mr. Costello gets some more clips, again, I was just starting to talk about, you know, two years ago where we were. And it was a much larger development, certainly in terms of land area. And we were proposing extending a dedicated road and really redeveloping Wilber Track Road to then continue about another 1,000, 1,200 feet back up to the south, ultimately making an emergency connection to that subdivision. We were pretty long through the planning board process for that. And I do want to stipulate that those townhomes on the other side of this line are in the R-120 residential zoning district. So we were moving forward under a clustered Town Law 278 application. Shortly after we started to really get our design and drawings together, it became pretty evident that it was going to be a financially difficult project to undertake because it did involve so much infrastructure, but only, again, the 32 townhome units. So when you did the math, essentially what we'd have to charge for those units was not nearly enough to cover the cost of that. So we went back to the drawing board last year, and one of the things that we decided was, hey, you know, rather than impacting all of the land and disturbing that area and extending that road all the way back there, what if we just focus on a much smaller area down at the foot of the hill that's a lot further away from some of the residential subdivisions that are kind of up on the hill to the south and west? We went through several iterations. The most recent one this board saw was here. This is a single multifamily building. Again, here's K2 Brewing. We're right behind that, tucked into the toe of the slope. So we kind of had this long linear building designed with the parking in the front. A previous version actually had the building and the parking swapped. But it was then kind of determined through discussions with this board that, you know, a building this high, this was a three-story building with 60 units, you know, really didn't want to be that close to the road. It would be just a little bit too big, you know, so we looked at flipping them. Comments we then received were also, you know, along the lines of taking this parking lot and pulling it and somehow incorporating it into the lands that were within the LaSalle Landing zoning district. The zoning line is right here, which kind of differentiates the two, which have much different regulations associated with them. One of the things that we did do when we did this rendition was we did look at a line of site profile from our neighbors, again, that are up on top of the hill. We really wanted to make sure that we wouldn't be impacting any of them with their views down to the water, off into the cove, and into that area. And we found that with this building, we were really nowhere near impacting that line of site. And I'll show you guys that in a moment. What we're going to do now is switch to our revised and current site plan and just speak to some of the changes that we made and why we feel it's a better solution for the project. Give me a moment here. So this one obviously has a lot more color, but again, there's K2 Brewing here. One of the things I do want to point out is we spent quite some time working with the state DOT, recognizing, you know, everybody who lives in Penfield or has ever traveled to Empire Boulevard is well aware of some of the high speeds and traffic volumes along this area. It was important that any project we did would include some kind of improvement. We had originally talked to the state about putting a light at this area, but they quickly rebuffed that idea. In order to get a light, you can't just ask for one and put it in. You have to meet certain, what they call warrants. And the traffic volumes coming out of our site didn't meet or really didn't come anywhere near any of those warrants. But fortunately, what we did get them to agree to allow us to do, at no small cost, mind you, is install a left turn lane that would allow the westbound vehicles kind of traveling towards around Quaid 590, their turn lane so that they could turn in and enter the project without being in the main travel lane of the eastbound two-through lanes. Not dissimilar to the improvements that were constructed on the other side of the inlet going up the hill near where the Water's Edge apartments are. So that is part of our project proposal. As you move further to the south, along Wilber Track, you can see that what we've done is kind of taken the building and we've turned it into an L. I think that accomplishes a lot of things. For starters, it really provides better views for the people living here. I think it's certainly a more aesthetically pleasing approach. It gives us the ability to put this parking lot kind of on the northernmost portion of the project, just in case there's, you know, any overflow from K2. That was a comment that was to express to us previously. And Dr. Howitt, who's owned this land now for quite some time, has allowed some of their overflow parking to be on this parcel and is willing certainly to continue to be a good neighbor and work with them. It continues to be 60 units, primarily one- and two-bedroom units. The previous proposal that had all the townhomes going up the hill, those were all twos and three-bedrooms. So even though it was a similar unit count, even though it was still higher than what we're proposing, it was a much higher density in terms of number of people that would actually be living in there and kids and school buses and everything like that. This is more of an empty nester, young professional-type project, which, you know, is pretty common for the area. And then the majority of the parking is back here to the south, all of it contained within the LaSalle Landing zoning district, and all of it pretty well out of sight from any people that are traveling here along the roadway. So that building, how should we bring this? We had our architects, Hamlin Architecture, start to work up what that might potentially look like. We've had the benefit of doing other projects in the town, and it's always been expressed that due to its adjacency to the bay, you know, maintaining a nautical theme to really, you know, give a good aesthetic has always been important. I don't know if that's going to stay, but we'll see. I'm kind of floating around here. I'm sorry about that. I want to get everybody in his way so they can actually see it.
It's a better situation.
So, you know, I personally think this is a very nice building. You can see that it's got a lot of architectural features in it. It's got balconies, very big windows, a lot of the cool color tones, you know, that really do give it the nautical feel. Certainly not a cheap building, and I think it's pretty unique. It's not like a lot of the multifamily buildings you see going up in other communities around town. The L really gives it some definition, allows for its entrance. You can see the lowest floor is really that masonry base-type material. And as you move up to the upper floors, there's a mixture of different materials, including some sheet-type siding. Recognizing that height could or is relatively sensitive, we've really brought the roofline down in a lot of different areas with a mansard roof to kind of hide that upper floor up into the roof structure around and building a big tall roof right on top of it. We went back and we visited our line of site study, which again, this is a very primitive and crude representation of our building, but it is graphically accurate in terms of where it is. And if you were standing at the top of the hill at one of those homes in the backyard looking down to the water, drawing a straight line to the edge of the water, right about where it hits there, where it always floods and it's always an issue, we wouldn't impact that line of sight. And so we really do have the benefit of the slopes that come down. And, you know, it's a pretty steep slope. We're not impacting that slope, which can be a problem with our type of developments if you cause erosion. But we're able to avoid that slope, but we're really also able to hide in it. You know, that extends up, you know, well over 110 feet. You know, our building is only, you know, each floor is about 10, so 40 feet plus a little bit of roof. So we were glad that that checked out. We certainly want to be respectful of our neighbors. When we were going through the original process in the planning board with the townhomes, we certainly heard a lot of comments and concerns. We're hoping that we're being responsive to that by really scaling down the size of the development. And also, you know, certainly we don't want to completely hide it. We're proud of it. We think it's a nice-looking building, but we also don't want to have too much impact on our neighbors. So that's where we've landed. We're kind of here tonight to introduce the projects to the new board members and also talk about next steps going forward. You know, this is still, it kind of hurts to say this, but kind of at the conceptual level, even though we've been at this for, you know, a few years now. But if, you know, this kind of concept, this idea was something the board, it would be interesting in continuing to review. You know, our next steps would be to complete all the detailed engineering that goes behind this and taking the architectural documents to the next level and continuing the process with this board. So with that, you know, I guess I'll throw in there, we aren't impacting any environmental features. There's no flood plain. There's no wetlands. The geotechnical reports all look really good. So from a, you know, physical standpoint and quality of property that we're dealing with, we're in a very good position, especially with this piece of land here down at the bottom of the hill. With that, Dr. Howitt, I don't know if you'd like to add anything or?
Perhaps I ought to, to the new board members, introduce myself. I'm Jack Howitt. My company is Midland Management. We've been managing property for about 46 years. There's another generation in place that's going to continue doing that. Our modus operandi is to build, manage, develop, and hold and maintain places that we consider homes to the people that are residents. As I say, we've been doing that now for 46 years. We hopefully will be doing it for the next 46 years as well. Can't promise.
Was there a reason for stroking that beard like that, Doc?
I'm wanting to show that I'm entitled to the 46 years.
Good for you. Great, congratulations to that.
Thank you. We are not buyers and sellers. We own and operate. We're not fee managers. Fee managers are people who manage property for other people. We only operate property for properties in which we or members of the company hold substantial interests personally in those properties. So it's a hold and manage philosophy rather than a develop, build, fill them up, and sell them to somebody else who we can make a profit from. This has been done in all of the towns essentially around the greater Rochester area, wherein everywhere from Cannon Diggwood to Brockport to Leroy to Gates, Chilai, we have a big presence. And for many years, we'd like to develop presence in, we'd like to develop presence in Penfield because we think it's a place where good things have been happening. And that's basically what it is. I would like to mention that we hold a designation of AMO, which means Accredited Management Organization. That's a designation that's given by the National Association of Realtors to relatively few management companies and relatively few locally. But it basically means we've been carefully vetted on a national as well as state standard for our professionalism and abilities to operate our properties. And with that, certainly available for any questions that you might have.
Okay. Board, any initial questions for Dr. Howitt or his engineer?
Jess, if I heard you correctly, that this, what you're proposing does not impact, negatively impact any EPod?
Yes, sir.
Such environmental concerns and stuff like that?
Correct.
Okay.
And Dr. Howitt, Jess, the plans for the property going up the hill southerly, originally what was planned as the townhouse project, what is the intent for that?
The townhouses are erased. We're not going to be doing those.
Okay, got it. So the land will be just left in its natural state?
At the present, if, I can't take away the possibility that sometime in the future we might want to build a house or something up there. No commercial projects at this point.
And then there is that piece of land, if you will, to the west that is up on the hill. When we first discussed the property, I think one of the discussion points was that that property might be considered for donation to the County of Monroe?
That's correct.
Is that, is that something that's still?
We haven't taken that off the table. We obviously haven't spoken about it in a long time. But if that's the wish of the, of the town, we certainly can do that.
Okay, all right.
Jess, the total acreage of the entire property is roughly?
I want to say it's around 30.
Okay. And so this, what you're proposing here would use about how, how many acres?
Just under five.
Okay. So 25 acres then of the 30 acres is not being used?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions or other comments for either Dr. Howitt or Jess?
Just to add on to Andy, so the remaining acreage goes up the hill in the back? Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Takes its way up?
Up to the south, if you will, and then to the west up on the, up on the top of the hill as well. Because that is kind of in a bowl, if you think about a bowl in that, in that area.
The, I guess it'd be the west side of the building where it meets the hill, the slope of the hill. It calls for a retaining wall, just roughly how?
It's only a couple of feet.
Okay.
It's not 12 feet or anything like that.
Got you. So where you're located is pretty much the bottom of the slope, is?
Yep. Yeah, we were very deliberate about not, when you have really steep slopes like that, once you even start to touch them, it snowballs quickly in an expensive way.
So the, so the discussion point tonight before the board is potential next steps. The board could take a cycle, a work session cycle to take a look at this and kind of digest it. And if you have any additional questions, we can get those back to Dr. Howitt and Jess via staff. If the board feels that the project has come to a point that they're willing to take it to a formal public hearing, that's an option as well. Or certainly there's always the do-nothing option on the table as well. So I'd just ask the board what, what's your comfort level might be for next steps?
Is it, is it a public hearing or is it a public information?
Well, we've, we've done both, Andy. So that's a good point. So that's a fourth option. In the past, we have done a public information meeting, then followed by a public hearing or we go to a public hearing. So there are a couple of options there as well. And with the public information meeting, what I would suggest and encourage, if we were to go that route, not to have Dr. Howitt spend really any, any more money on any additional plans. Use what we have here and take that to an informational meeting.
I have just one question maybe on the, obviously the four stories.
Yes.
And it changed a little bit. It was three stories before. Because obviously, you're doing that, you're shrinking it down. And I don't know, I guess I still have to, I still have to think about that. You know, I've, I see what you're saying on your site line here, but I guess it's just the, that extra story seems a little high. I mean, I like what you've done with the windows. I understand that. I guess I'm just having trouble visualizing how.
That's a good point. And we haven't talked about this in the past, but certainly the staff and Dr. Howitt have been out there on several occasions. It might be a good idea for the board maybe to go out and look at the site and get a feel for how it relates to the soap behind it and how it relates to the K2 brewery.
So I've been to the K2 brewery a number of times, but I just don't try to visualize them.
And maybe it's a situation where, you know, periodically when we've done this in the past, and I know Jess has been involved in it, we've actually put up balloons to identify the height so you get a feel for the height of the roof as it relates to the property around it, just to get a feel for that. That might be something to look at as an option as well.
Tony, I would, I think that's a good idea. I would offer that we table this for another meeting with two new board members. And this is the first time that they've really had an opportunity to look at this. This is the first time I've seen the new design too come forward from the applicant that we have two more weeks to deliberate, but also to get out to the site and take a look and see that, particularly with, you know, the two new council members, before we make a decision to move forward with a public hearing or a public information meeting or to go back and look at some additional redesign of the, of the infrastructure.
Okay. So what would you need from the applicant or staff at this point? Anything additional or would you prefer as a individuals or a small group to go out to the site? Would you like staff to accompany or would you like anyone from Mr. Sudol's office to be there?
I think it would be beneficial to everybody if, if we all were there, I mean, with Jess as the engineer, to kind of show us the exact locations. And then, you know, whether Jim Costello joins us, you know, or whoever from the town just to represent the town's perspective on it so that we can kind of get both sides of the story and get everybody at the same place at the same time, hearing the same thing.
Okay.
Doesn't need to be long, doesn't need to be formal, you know, just to do that before we decide what the next step is going to be.
Okay. So I was just going to ask, is the board comfortable in doing that over the next two weeks so that the next work session would be held February 12th? And would the board feel comfortable to be able to make a commitment to get out there prior to that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Tony. Would the board be, I'm trying to get you all together at one time. I know you all work, maybe on a Saturday morning or something like that, early on a Saturday morning. That'll give you a chance not to be rushed. You know, it's dark, it's dark at 4:30 today, so.
We can actually bring one of our drones out and we can fly it up to the height of the building at all different spots.
Perfect, yes.
Jess, you had actually gone and staked out the other locations.
Yeah, we had to stay right on the ground where the edge of the building was. But, you know, it would probably be helpful, to your point, to be able to go to those different heights.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So I might ask board to be flexible with, I know time is valuable to everybody, but I'd ask to be flexible. And I'd ask maybe if we could, I'll ask Mr. Costello to coordinate that with Jess and Dr. Howitt, but look to, to do that here either an upcoming Saturday or next Saturday, if we could do that based on schedules.
Yep.
All right. I think you, you first put it out. Would you like to put that in a form of a motion, Mr.?
Yes, I would like to put a motion before the board that we hold this item for two weeks until the next work session to give the entire board an opportunity to get out to the site and take a look at elevations, take a look at the proposed line of sites, and to look at the site concept as it's being proposed tonight by the applicant.
Okay, second to that?
Second.
All right. Moving, seconded, any other discussion? Is there anything additional that the board would like to see? Okay. And then I'd ask, I'd ask the applicant, is there any additional comments or input that you would like to add to this discussion that hasn't already been discussed this evening?
I, I don't think so. I had the pleasure today of getting a request for new flooring from one of our residents. I avoided the need of going out there to determine the need because I took a look at the record and they were with us for 20 years. That's not unusual in our, in our management group to have long-term residents with us. You didn't ask one question which I thought might come up, which is, what's our target here? And our target is always amorphous. I mean, it moves back and forth. Certainly, we want to fill our units with, with folks that will enjoy living there and can be there. But basically, as we build units and as we basically as we build units and as we target this particular location, this is pretty much workforce housing. That's kind of a term that's turning up in the industry a good bit, but basically that means that we're looking for people who will qualify to be our residents, who are in the brackets of schoolteachers, policemen, firemen, et cetera, and that range of, of, of people who are inhabitants or would like to be inhabitants of the town of Penfield.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to go into a, a long song about that, but that's, that's it in the basics, if you like.
Okay, all right. Okay, so there's a motion, a second on the table, seeing no further discussion or comment. Those in favor to hold for two weeks, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll, we'll see you, and Jim, you will get things coordinated and get that out to the board.
Yep.
That would be greatly, greatly appreciated. Okay, we'll move on to our second, second guest. We have our friends from RGENE. This is an update on Circuits seven fifty-nine and seven forty. I think we have Mark with us tonight and others, and I'll ask them to please come to the, to the table, and we'll pick up where we are with this project. And this is, this is a project that's replacing an existing line, a little bit more detailed, but a, a project that's replacing an existing overhead line, for the most part, coming up from the Panorama Valley area up through and including Shadow Pines, Sawmill Drive, Wayland Road, Five Mile Line Road, and ultimately ending in the Five Mile Line Road area. So with that, Mark, welcome, and, and team, great to see you again, and so the floor is yours, and we'll go from there.
Very good, and thank you very much for your time, for the board's time. Just wanted to go over the Wayland Road access plan that we had submitted. I prepared a presentation, but I don't think we have any multimedia availability right now.
We, we do, what do you need, just a screen?
Yeah, just a screen.
Not a problem.
Oh, perfect.
You, you ask and I shall receive.
Well, thank you.
Mark, it's your last name?
Anderson.
I'll see how, I'll see how handy, one of the guys downstairs or, or Mr. Costello may have to help me, but I'll get you, get you set up.
What's that?
I, I do not have a projector.
HDMI cable, we're doing.
We don't, so we could, we could possibly take one short item, which will take less than five minutes, and in the meantime, my crew that's listening is coming right here. You ask and I shall receive.
Wow, very impressive.
Yes.
I can take care of this.
We need a projector.
Yeah.
HDMI or?
Do you have the old people?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That piece was easy. So if you'll bear with us for five, stay right there, we'll go on, take one piece of business out of order, we'll get you connected, that way we don't have people just sitting around, and that we'll go on from there. So get yourself, get yourself ready, and we'll jump in in five minutes or less. All right, I will, I will ask Mr. Costello, we'll go into our action items. We have a hold harmless agreement request, that's for eighteen West Field Commons.
Yes.
Mark Valentine was set up for that, and I think we have Mr. Costello that's pinch hitting.
Aye.
So.
So we have, this is evening, Andrew and Amy Nicholas, and they have recently purchased the property at eighteen West Field Commons, yes, these are the guys. They would like to install a fence in their backyard, it's going to basically be the backyard, and one of the issues they've run into with our engineering group is that a portion where they wanted to install the fence falls within one of our drainage easements. And if you look at the survey map, it shows the red lines, those are the areas where the fencing is proposed on the, on the right-hand side of that map. What they're doing is they're proposing to tie into an existing, existing fence that their neighbor owns, which is already in place. The engineering group found that the, that fence is either not in easement, or it's maybe a foot encroachment in easement, but it's not affecting the, the drain line on, on the site. Actually, there's some pictures that I have there that show the fence that's in place now, and I'm thinking that you want to just tie that in so that you can enclose the backyard. Do you have permission from the neighbors to encroach onto their property to do that?
We spoke to them.
So in essence, what they're going to be doing is they're going to be two, two linear pieces of fencing that go across into the easement. They don't affect the drainage piping on the site, the catch basin is, is before that point, as you can see. There's a catch basin that's about two-thirds down the, the property line on the right side of the property. As a matter of fact, I think they even have a picture of the catch basin, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, so the catch basin passes around. So they're, they're quite a ways away from the catch basin, and I think you're going to be going behind the pine trees, or you're going to go in front of them?
Behind.
Behind, that's, your property line is a little bit behind that area. So they're asking relief, they recognize, I know they've met with Mark, they're recognizing they need to have a hold harmless agreement, so in the event that we have to go in and do work on that pipe, anything that's in the way of that, they're responsible, we will take it out, but they'll be responsible for replacing it at their cost. So we are, we are recommending, PRC is recommending that they be allowed to have the fence subject to the board requiring a hold harmless agreement, which would have to be recorded at the Monroe County Clerk's office.
Okay, so two encroachments, as you've indicated, there's going to be a double door gate, kind of on the, what I'll call the west end, on the north side of the house, but on the west end, and then on the east end of the property, again, the north side, the fence will have a small utility gate at that location as well.
Correct.
So. I do believe the, the catch basin in the backyard is a dead-end catch basin, it doesn't go any further.
Okay, so that it dead-ends right, right there on the east of the property line?
The only portion of fence that would actually go over and cross the pipe would be the one in front tied to the house.
Got it, okay, so good, good point. That was going to be my next question, that if I took a look at Sheffield Square, Section Two, does that, does that easement continue down through there? So it dead-ends at that, at that location, okay?
Andrew, I assume that you're seeking permission from your next-door neighbor to tie into their fence? Have they given it to you?
Yes.
Could they give us a letter indicating that that's the case, so we have that for the record, just in case something happens on the road?
We can get that.
Is it really, it relates to the potential buyers of that property down the line, so you have some protection?
Yeah, written documentation I think is better than an oral agreement or a handshake in these type of situations.
Does it need to be notarized, or is it?
They could send me an email, it's them, but I'd like to have something on the record saying that they agreed to do it, and you're not going to be held liable for it if you do it.
Okay, board, questions either for the applicant or staff?
Jim, you said PRC already looked at this?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Staff, any additional comments, input that you believe is pertinent that we haven't already discussed that you feel should be added to the record?
The only issue is, is that they are not going to be encroaching anywhere near that catch basin to the back of the property, but somewhere in the middle there when they're coming in, we might want to make sure you can hand dig that area so you're not hitting that pipe somewhere along the way. The, the fence installers know enough to do that, we've had them do that on several occasions. We don't want you to have to replace the pipe if you don't have to.
Protection of yourself.
That's right.
Yeah, got it. Okay, and then I'll just ask the applicants, any additional questions for the board that, that you would like to ask, or any questions you might have for us? Nope, okay?
So what will happen is the town, we'll prepare a resolution for the town board authorizing the supervisor to sign the whole harmless agreement, it's a standard format of document, we'll have you sign it as well, we'll record it at the Monroe County Clerk's office, so all your successors and your neighbor's successors know that it's in place, and then you'll have to pay for the recording fees, and we'll let you know what they are.
Okay.
Okay?
What is our timeframe on this?
The town board will probably have a resolution next meeting.
It'll be at our, it'll be at our next meeting, which will be February fifth.
And then we'll record the document for you, so when the fence people, they can start working on the site as soon as we get that document.
Okay.
Okay, all right, seeing no questions either from the applicant, staff, or board, would entertain a motion of approval for this waiver?
Move.
Okay, by Andy? By Danny? Okay. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so matter passes. Stay in touch with Mr. Costello, if you wouldn't mind getting that letter in from your neighbor. Again, he can, he or she can email that into Mr. Costello, so he has it. Mr. Costello will be preparing a resolution for the fifth, and the board will be looking to pass that resolution on the fifth of, of February. All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just make note of the fact that the pond treatment review, that's going to be withdrawn for this evening. Mark has got some information, and unfortunately he is out with a death in the family, so we will put that on the agenda for February 12th, if we could please, Lisa. All right, and it looks like we have, are pretty close to contact here, and we will get this turned over, get this turned over to our friends from RGENE.
So Tony, this RGENE update, this is in reference to what is happening on the Shadow Pines Backtime property off Wayland Road right where the barn and?
That is, that is correct, that is, that is correct. Okay, so we've got pretty much contact with things. All right.
Yes, thank you for the multimedia support.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, very good. So just wanted to first provide a quick update on our project. Currently, the project, project is ongoing in the area of Panorama Trail, Penfield Road, and Sawmill Road. We're here today to discuss our Wayland Road access plan, slightly revised from the original approved drawings.
It works, take it away.
So this primarily composes a temporary matted work pad, a temporary access to the matted work pad off of Wayland Road, and additional stabilized entrance for safer ingress and egress from the property. Based on our recent communications, it seems the temporary matted work pad and access would be the most agreeable solution, at least for our current needs. Our benefits we see with this matted pad is the additional efficiencies the project will gain with a closer proximity to the project site, especially as we head into spring, when we start going up Five Mile and along Sawmill Drive. Based on the communications we received, AgriGren is in agreement with the proposed fee and the retroactivity back to first occupation, which currently we have as October 2019. The second component, which will probably require a little more discussion, is our proposal for the stabilized entrance, the, along Sawmill, I meant, along Wayland Road. Basically, the proposed versus the current, if you're coming from the north to the south along Wayland Road, I believe you have a much better line of sight, especially as we get into the spring and we have more traffic coming into the site, delivering materials and going out to the work site. I believe if they're entering in via that location, and also potentially egress from that location, you have a better line of sight, and also it's potentially safer to the public. I guess I want to get some input from the board, because I know this has been a contended topic, but I do think it has benefits that I would like to at least discuss with the board today.
So.
Mark, can you go back to the overall?
I was going to say, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just.
Perfect.
Yep, thank you.
So the, kind of in the center of the diagram, where the orange square is, kind of overlaid over, is where the white barn is and the, the few job trailers are parked right now. Kind of as the, you know, project started, and, you know, myself and Tony were in, and I had some conversations with O'Connell Electric, who's the contractor doing the work. They were looking for a, you know, for an area to utilize for those job trailers. You know, given the proximity and the fact that they're going to be doing some of the work on the Shadow Pines property to begin with, you know, we're kind of willing to offer up, you know, that paved area in front of the barn. At that point, all they wanted was, you know, or all they needed was kind of the one entrance coming off of Wayland Road, just to the east itself of that barn area. Since then, they've kind of requested that the area up in the top left corner of the screen, it is a paved asphalt parking lot, or kind of pad area right now. They'd asked if, the contractor asked if they could use that for kind of the, all of the workers' personal vehicles when they show up first thing in the morning, to be able to park there, and then hop in the crew vehicles and equipment to kind of head and work on the line. And at which point, at the end of the day, they would get back in their personal vehicles and leave. You know, they've kind of been doing that, but especially with kind of some of the weather and the fact that things have been a little wet and mushy other than this past week, they were kind of driving, just cutting from that paved pad area right across through the mud out onto Wayland Road, which we've, you know, instructed them to stop and required that they put snow fence up to actually kind of block that off and, you know, kind of stop driving across that. They've wanted to put in, you know, the stone access coming off of Wayland Road into that area, you know, as a kind of secondary access, but given that they're using it for the employee parking, I don't necessarily fully understand the need for it. Part of it, it is a, given that Wayland Road is a county road, it would actually require a Monroe County DOT permit, but, you know, I myself am not necessarily comfortable, you know, with kind of putting any more curb cuts or pull-offs, you know, off of Wayland Road, especially near the, the curve, and the fact that the quarry is right across the street.
Okay, so I think, Mark, was there some discussion about deliveries and how those deliveries would, would be coming in?
Yeah, I guess that's the perspective I was looking at from was, when I look at, you know, station site, I try and look at the ingress and egress and what's our line of sight, you know, as these larger trucks come up and have to slow down, what's the most optimal direction to be coming from, so it doesn't unduly impact traffic. And I guess in looking at our current entry into the property versus the proposed, it just seemed at least an ideal alternative to pursue.
So is it, is it safe to say that the trucks might, are, are of a size that they might come in this entrance here, drop off, and then exit here, and then vice versa?
I think coming in from the north might be better, because you're on that side of the road, you just have to make a slight turn to your right to come in. And even upon exit, it might be better for egress from that location as well, if we could expand out the paved area. I, I just see like, because then you have perfect line of sight going to the north of traffic coming, and you're trying, not trying to cut across traffic.
So you would, you would propose up at that paved area, that's where you would drop the? that's where you would drop materials coming in?
I think that would be most ideal, and that's what I've discussed with the construction team.
Would they be storing the materials on that pad area? Or, I guess, maybe you can help me better understand. My understanding was that the materials were going to be stored on that, kind of the matted pad.
Yeah, we have two different areas where we're storing different materials. There's both the matted pad, and also we have those storage trailers down there on the, by the barn right now.
So this is a big, this area right here, this is, so this is where all the guys are parking now, right? All the Duke are coming in parking here, because I walk this a lot. So I walk down here, and everything, this is the big pad, and you're spinning out. Now you have to go around all this stuff to get to the trails, because it's all mudded up and everything. And then there's a big, there's a big crane somewhere over, um, where's the crane now? Down here? The crane's down here. But this is a long way for, if you're dropping material, am I wrong? If you were dropping materials up here, it's a long way to get it to the pad.
I just mean first to even get to the property, into the property, so...
Oh, you're, so you're saying...
Not, you're not physically dropping them off there just to get in.
So you'd have to come all the way down here and then drop it all off here?
Yep.
And this is all mud. This is all just mud. There's pavement, a little bit of paving, and it's just all mud here, right? It's, it's, um...
It, it's pretty slick, and that's where, you know, there's obviously the opportunity to possibly...
Because the little path runs right next to it. You can look, I walk right by all the cars and then come down into here, you know?
Yeah, I mean, with the weather considering, it might be an opportunity to also put some crushed stone there too, to stabilize the slope.
How many deliveries are, is it, yeah, a day? Is it every day?
Well, once we get into construction, materials will be coming in and also leaving on a daily basis.
So as vehicles, as vehicles might come in here and then come down here, you're still suggesting that they go back out this way?
You know, I guess, you know, you have, you know, with, just my experience in trying to get out of there, right? Especially during the winter. I don't have four-wheel drive. But I just, um, it does seem like you have better line of sight up there for both ingress and egress out of the property. Just because, you know, the speed limit of the road, the limited line of sight. I guess those were just my...
And then, and then how do you turn, how do you turn the vehicles around to get back out, Mark? What's, what's the thought?
I, my thought is, we basically have to clear out some of those materials that are down there at the barn right now, move them to the work pad.
And, and open that up?
Yep.
And open that up? And then use, use this for maybe some bigger?
Yeah, the larger stuff.
Larger stuff there? And then open that up from a, a turnaround and then means of egress out back where they came in? What, what size truck would these deliveries be coming in on?
I mean, I can get back to you with the exact specifics with my construction team. I don't want to make a statement being inaccurate.
Your trailer's not going to...
Yeah.
Because I was down there this, you know, myself today with you at the meeting.
Yeah.
And turning around in the pickup itself was tight enough, let alone anything bigger.
Yeah, I mean, the bucket's a lot of load getting in there and out. Right now, it's pretty tight with everything. That's why at the very least, the work pad will do a lot to alleviate the congestion in there right now.
Okay, question, I, I mean, maybe, maybe that's not, you've got some of those, that was equipment, that funky-looking thing that, that, do you see that thing? I don't know what it's called.
Technical terms.
That technical, well, that, you know, that, it's this, it looks like a, almost like an urban assault vehicle or something that's down there. It's this kind of cool thing I saw. Anyways, they couldn't pick up the, they, could they ever go somewhere and pick up the materials that have to be delivered down there?
Oh, yeah, and like...
Instead of having trucks come down there? Wouldn't that be...
Yeah, there's some, I'm trying to think of the piece of equipment you're thinking of, where we can move around some of the smaller pieces of like loads on pallets and move them around the site.
Wouldn't that be easier than, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, I'm not an engineer or figure that stuff out, but...
Well, yes, in either case, they still have to get into the site, right? So I guess it's the question of, you know, which entrance, you know, we have a current, we have a current, you know, hardened entrance with limited line of sight. Now granted, there's other ways of mitigating the risks I define. We could, you know, put up signage, you know, maybe limit, speed limits on the road temporarily during higher congestion. But I guess the least impact to local traffic in the community would be to maybe put in that stabilized construction entrance.
Isn't it unreasonable to make that exit to the right as we view the screen? A right turn on? Or are we to configure that? Vehicles wanting to come in from the north entrance and just head out? And they wouldn't be making that left into a blind?
I guess even when they're making, you know, obviously, the right turn is always more profitable, because you're not trying to cut across traffic, especially for these larger vehicles. But I guess even when you're taking a right only, those cars come around that turn quite fast. You don't have a lot of time to react. And if car, you know, larger, these larger vehicles that don't move too fast, especially going up the slope, which is, you know, not extremely steep, but steep enough where it's going to slow down the vehicle, it doesn't give traffic a lot of time to respond.
Well, now knowing the size of the vehicles, kind of is hard to, I guess, make that.
Yeah, like, if you're thinking like your larger bucket trucks, those are constantly coming in and out right now. As we get into construction, you'll have more of your flatbeds to put the cable reels up onto, because the, the cable is on single reels that have to be twined in all three together to go into conduit. So you have three big reels on a big old flatbed. So you have fairly large vehicles to, I can provide exact dimensions as a follow-up to this meeting.
There, there is a, it's a little hard to see, but kind of where that upper pad area is in the top left corner. You can somewhat see the kind of blurry writing pointing to where the, just down below that.
Oh, right here.
Right there.
The gate?
So that does point to a gate, where the, that pad does exit onto Waylon Road. You know, and does provide, you know, a paved surface right out to the road. You know, there was kind of a discussion about the possibility of, you know, opening that gate up and using that. But the concern was that it would be, still be too tight for deliveries. I mean, I guess if the, if the need is more for, you know, passenger vehicles and pickup trucks and whatnot, you know, that gate, I would be more in favor of opening the gate to allow a second area rather than putting stone and having anyone, you know, kind of driving off the edge of the road. But, you know, that's up to the board to determine. What do you say, Mark?
So if the, if the intent is to get better site distance, and that gated area is more for what I'll call personal vehicles, cars, pickup trucks, and things like that, I, I don't, unless you plan on just removing that gate totally? So an option would be, you know, can you remove that gate easily? And make that the access point for everything? And if the answer is no, then it brings us back to the discussion, you know, of...
It is, the gate is, it's about as wide as this table is long. It could be, you know, opened up, so the vehicles could, you know, drive through it. Someone does define where the pavement actually is versus just kind of the, you know, the mud and, you know, unstabilized material along the edge of the road. I guess it could be removed, but it'd be kind of difficult to do this time of year.
So can you just pop the, the gate off and just leave the, the kingpins there?
It's actually a, kind of a roller gate, so we could just roll it open.
Roll it open, and it would be out of the way?
Leave it open.
And leave it open? And...
Just rolls parallel to the road.
Yep, and then that would, that would alleviate the need for a temporary entrance. So that would alleviate the need to go to the county for a permit. And if done properly, we keep cars from coming or going from that, from that area, keep, you know, mud, silt, and everything off the road. So as an alternative. So, Mark?
I, I think that, like you said, it is kind of tight into that gate. I don't have the exact dimensions in my mind, but...
I mean, we, when we started doing the work, taking the trees down, you know, and filling the roadside, we were driving our, you know, 10-mill dump trucks through the gate.
Okay.
You know, they, they fit to be able to turn to get into that. Might be difficult for a tractor-trailer if you've got deliveries, but... I mean, any of your bucket trucks are no bigger than, you know, our trucks. They'll, they'll, they would be able to turn in.
And then how, how regular are you getting tractor-trailer trucks, Mark, roughly?
I think when we really start to pick up in construction, you know, you'll load up the, your, your larger tractor trailer, your flatbeds with the reels probably at least every few days. Because once you put it on the flatbed, you're going to go out to the site, you're going to run the cable.
Until you're...
Until you're out.
Until you're out.
And you're probably going to get at least...
A few days worth of...
Yeah, of operate, you know?
So is there any, is there any reason for a couple of times a week that they could use this access point to get in with the tractor-trails? And then use the other access point for everything else?
As long as we, I guess, I think so, I...
You mean making a left, you make a left?
Yeah, they're, they're going to be cutting across traffic in order to turn in, right?
Have you had, there's 300 large trucks that do that every day, turning into the quarry? Another one or two a week, I'm not sure is going to make a major difference.
I guess that's a fair point.
Hey, at this, this time of the year, they're probably only running about 200 trucks a day. So they're down a little bit to the quarry. But if you take a look, you've got 200-plus trucks a day crossing, crossing into the quarry or crossing out of the quarry each and every day. That probably goes up to three plus, you know, in nicer weather. On a daily basis.
I think that's a fair point that I probably didn't fully appreciate.
Okay.
So I think the proposed solution would be most ideal, encompassing everything we've discussed tonight.
So we would open, we'd open this up and leave this, leave this open if you come in through a hardscape. This would not be needed necessarily. Just ask that the workers not, you know, the guy that gets out with his four-by and says, "I'm going to take it to the car wash anyways, why not run it through the mud?"
No, we'll keep up with you.
I would just keep that, keep that...
Keep the snow fence up, the...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just redone today.
And the bigger pieces of equipment where they're slow getting in and out of there, and probably aren't all that many, and it's not that frequent, have you thought about flagging that area while that's happening?
I think that's a fair point, and I think I'll bring it up in my next construction meeting, because...
It doesn't have to be every vehicle, but at least the slow ones that take time to get out of there and need some time without everybody bearing down on them. You'd have to stop it for a few minutes just to let them out.
And maybe I, you know, I don't necessarily know the answer, but it may be worth contacting or, you know, having a conversation with them, like to see if some of the tractor-trailers could even pull in and kind of unload where they, you know, used to keep some of their small stone piles up top. And then, you know, when you're unloading them with a lull, bring them across to that kind of pad area where the swamp mats are.
Well, let's minimize the moving parts overall. I mean, right, right now, they're, they're dealing with, they're dealing with us. Why don't we, why don't we keep it to us rather than bringing in yet a third party? If that's something that you elect to pursue, I'll let, I'll let you look at that, but I'm not sure we need to be in the middle of, middle of that. And one might argue that you have more potential problems with a lull.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure if they would allow it or not.
And what have yourself. Okay. So with those, with those amendments and those recommendations, board comfortable, comfortable with that approach?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Mark and team comfortable, Stacy, right?
Stacy, yeah, very good.
Sorry. Yeah, I was just sitting here.
You got it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I have Stacy.
What's her name?
I have a Stacy, so I kind of, I could put two and two together there, so, thank you. I apologize.
Oh, no problem.
So, so Mark, Stacy, any, any additional comments for the board? I know you have additional things that you might want to go over from a project standpoint at a high level, and certainly want to give you the ability to, to do that. But as the discussion around this ingress/egress here, reasonably comfortable?
I think we're very good.
Okay. Good, good. So again, don't want to cut you short. I know that you have a, a little bit of an overview, and at least we have at least two new board members that have not been familiar with that, with Bob and Debbie. And if you'd like to just hit at a high level some additional points for the project, you know, the floor and time is yours.
Okay. Just to provide a general overview of the project for the benefit of the rest of the board.
That'd be great.
So right now, the project includes these two circuits of the current jurisdiction of Penfield. It's primarily overlaid to Circuit 759. Now, the project extends from the area of Waylon Road down to Panorama Trail, cutting through the old golf course. The circuit was primarily previously an aerial overhead cable nitrogen-filled. Right now, we're in the process of removing all nitrogen-filled cables from the system. Most have reached the end of their useful life, and even those that haven't, they're rather costly from an operations per second to maintain and represent a reliability concern. So by removing all of them, placing into underground, we believe we'll be making the circuit not only replacing it, but also ensuring a more reliable circuit for the transmit of power between the substations in the local area. In terms of the construction right now, we're primarily down on Panorama Trail area. However, once winter breaks, and we get the go-ahead from the town, and just to confirm, once the weather breaks and we can start doing road work, will we come back to the town board to get the all-clear before we can proceed? Or entirely from you? All right, very good. And this is where we currently stand. I just want to, you know, open up to the new members and the rest of the board any questions about the project I can help clarify.
I have a question. What's the status of Sawmill? I'm getting calls from neighbors. I know you've talked to them, because they called me back and let me know that you did. But what is the status of the project down Sawmill?
So in terms of...
Where you are with it, and the percentage of completion, and what needs to be done yet?
So we haven't done the rest of the open cut along Sawmill yet until the break of winter. The only area that we're kind of in right now is that immediate culvert, because right now, we're down in the woods, doing all the work we can down there, which the major component of the work down there includes HDD, which is basically, we're tunneling under the creek for environmental reasons. We can't open cut it, obviously. So that's the, the bulk of the work that's going on right now. And that's why we also have, you know, as, you know, and we've resolved where there were some stockpiles that are improperly located in the center of the turnaround, and all of those were pushed to the side for the plows. As far as I'm aware, all issues were resolved with that. But by all means, both for Sawmill and any other matter that arises, we reach directly out to me, and we'll, we also have a bi-weekly construction meeting to also try to resolve these matters moving forward in a more expeditious fashion.
Can I ask you what the nature of the calls?
Oh, I think they were just wondering what the status of the project was. You know, I guess the roads been beaten up a little bit. I haven't been down there to see it, but they said the roads been beaten up a little bit. They were just wondering where you were with the project. I didn't have that answer at the time. But I know that they called, and somebody did talk to them, because they called me back to tell me that they didn't get the answers they were looking for.
Oh, great, okay. I was going to say, because we've communicated with them several times, and we provide a telephone information line there. And I'm the person that responds to them. So I'm just curious if there's something that we're not addressing. So I'm just curious if there's something that we're not addressing that we need to...
No, she said she was very happy after she had called and got the answer.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
Is Sawmill just another access point for this project, like a midpoint to it?
It's one of the roads in which we're actually putting installations along, so we're actually putting new duct bank along Sawmill Road. And, you know, responding to also the, you know, these heavier pieces of equipment and the wear and tear they do put onto the road, that's why we do fully intend to fully mill and resurface from curb to curb, the roads of which we're impacting for the project. And also, I just wanted to bring up, this is our public contact number. I can also provide this through my contact, Evette Torres, this presentation, in case if you don't have this number on hand, and maybe the number can be provided on your website if it isn't already, in case if any additional questions arise.
I can provide you with my business cards. Actually, I manned this number, so if they have any questions, concerns, they can leave, they'll either get me directly or they can leave a message and I'll respond to them either directly or through email.
Great. Stacy, you don't have a problem if we were to put that right on our website? I think it may be already, but we'll just verify that, but you wouldn't have a problem if we put that number up?
No, that's fine.
Not just our G and E, you know, information, you know, type of thing?
Certainly.
And put that up?
Yep, absolutely.
So we'll make sure...
For this project, don't...
For the...
Yeah, yes.
That's right.
I get that, I get that, so...
What is your estimate?
Not for their bill.
Right now, we're estimating July it will be wrapped up by. However, at least when it comes to the site location, because even though we might be energized in July, there might be some still restoration ongoing. So I was thinking of doing, basically, and propose to the board, when we process the fee for the use of the land, to assume a 12-month time period, including the retroactive period, so that would get us to approximately September.
Okay. I mean, that seems reasonable. I mean, if you're, I mean, this is not a, what I'll call a money grab. This is just making sure that, you know, everybody is fairly made whole, so if you finish in July and you have things wrapped up, that's, you know, that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking to necessarily extend and take advantage of them.
Well, thank you.
And how far down Five Mile, up past Sawmill, are you going, oh, you're going farther than...
Well, yeah, we're going all the way down Sawmill to where it reaches Five Mile, we'll head all the way up Five Mile to Wayland, and then cut over and it meets back up to approximately in the area of the barn. And that will be the extent of the underground segment along this roadway.
Mark, do you happen to have a map?
Yes.
That maybe just a quick hit there so that we could see roughly where start and termination?
Excellent. It's in my head. So we're taking it down.
We don't have green light here yet. We're working on it.
So this drawing shows the area. I'll kind of zoom in and kind of draw you through it.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
So I guess first, if you're wondering these color codes, I still update them, but essentially, we're starting from Penfield Road. This area is all actively part of our two-week forward look ahead. We're currently in this area and in this area right now with most of it underground. This one crossing is overhead, and then we transition back to underground. We then head up through this community and then go into the backwoods.
Yep.
And then along this backwoods is where we have our HDD for the crossing of the creek. And then we come up to the turnaround on Sawmill Drive. The Sawmill Drive extends all the way to the end where we meet up with Five Mile. We then head up to Five Mile, meet to the intersection of Wayland, and then come back and then terminate to the existing riser structure.
Gotcha.
Can you just zoom out and kind of trace roughly where the existing line kind of cuts?
Oh, I could probably bring up that drawing for you too, just so you can see in its entirety.
Just maybe help the newer members to understand kind of where it currently is and where it's, where the way it's going.
Sorry.
Just in case you forgot that from the county.
Get these out of the way. So you can see as we, kind of starting from where we just described, we traced the project as it is currently throughout from Penfield Road, the same alignment with very minimal changes, because this is a direct buried cable. We're obviously not following exactly, because we need to first put into service the new line before we can take out of service the old line. So as we come up across Panorama Trail, head into the community, and get into the backwoods, this is all currently an aerial nitrogen-filled cable on wood poles. And as you come into the community, primarily these wood poles all along the existing property adjoining to the old golf course. So this is probably also, once we get these poles out of there and cables out of there, it'll allow you to further open up the area.
So does that mean that everything is lower? Because I have been living in the lower part of this area. Does that mean all those have already been, they're still there or they've already been replaced or...
No, no, these would be removed. So the, yeah, so there, most of the poles only are carrying this nitrogen cable. So once we put in our service our project, we're going to be able to remove that existing.
Gotcha, I understand, okay.
And then obviously, that'll be towards the end of the project. Once the new line is in, it's tested and it's, you know, operating, then they'll do the cutover.
Right, gotcha.
So that line is currently unusable and it cuts through there?
Yep.
I think, I think Mark may have mentioned it, but the other, obviously, the other benefit of it is, is that if you have a tree coming down with it underground, from a reliability standpoint, that takes care of that concern of a tree coming down, taking the line out, and, you know, it's a pretty substantial line that would require a lot of work to take care of. So being proactive and putting it in the ground might help take care of some of those future outages through wind storms and things like that.
This is kind of the result of what happened a couple marches ago during the windstorm. I think they took a beating out there.
Yeah, I mean, one of my other roles is for planning for the storms, both before they hit and while they're hitting. So from my lessons learned from that other hat I wear, I try to do my best to make sure any projects I'm a part of are responding to that.
You had a fire at that pole on the Wayland Road end not that long ago, it seems, right? Where it comes back up out of the, either into the ground or out of the ground there? And the nitrogen tanks are housed? So that was damage that's been repaired and that's been functional since, and now it's coming out altogether then?
Yes, and there's obviously many aspects to that type of system that lends itself to being replaced with something more reliable and less time-consuming from a maintenance perspective.
Yeah, it's kind of going to see the trucks reform those tanks or swap the tanks every day, it seems, but yeah.
Okay, board, questions from Mark or Stacy? All right, staff, additional comments that you believe either haven't been answered or addressed that we should discuss? Mark or Stacy, anything additional that you believe you should be aware of or you'd like to put on the record for this project?
Well, at this time, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for taking the time, we appreciate it. And Eric and Joe will be our constant faces at those, I think it's bimonthly?
Biweekly.
Oh, biweekly, excuse me, biweekly, okay. And so they'll be our common faces there. Every now and again, I make pop interest and see how things are going.
Really? Appreciate it.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
That's good. Thank you for your time.
Glad we could get you hooked up. I'm going to do a quick off here so that I don't end up...
Glad it's you instead of me.
Being a field, thank you.
There we go. Just to make sure I don't end up blinded, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You got everything you need?
Yes.
And we'll get that, we'll verify, we've got that number up on the website.
Okay, perfect.
No names attached.
That's right.
For this project only.
For this project.
Very good. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to informational items, and so I've got the honor to update you. So under held items, we had the community choice aggregation, and that's been a held item for a while. I know this board had asked, and for Bob's and Debbie's benefit, the town board had asked that the EAC take a look at CCA and taking a look at what was going on in Pissford, Brighton, and Rondacquay, villages and town of Pissford. And one of the things that the board, the EAC, had done is we have put together a draft of a local law. We started in 2019, we're now 2020. At the EAC meeting today, the EAC is recommending to the town board that we move forward and pass a resolution at our February 5 meeting to establish a public hearing for this. This is kind of the foundation. This local law establishes the CCA Energy Program in the town of Penfield. That's kind of the table stakes, that's the foundation that you build from there. It's the first piece that has to be approved to then continue to move down the path. And so today, we dotted a few more i's, crossed a few more t's. Dick Horowitz has not seen those, but they are what I would consider very modest in nature by way of any updates. And so our recommendation to the town board is that we move forward and establish a public hearing and hear this matter sometime either in February, early March, depending upon legal notices and things like that. We'll give Dick one more opportunity. We do have next week, which is the fifth week of the month, and no town board meetings, so we'll have the opportunity to update this document and be ready for February 5. So our ask to you is that you support us moving forward with a public hearing.
Yeah, I certainly support that. And when you're saying the EAC, that's the Energy, it's the Town Energy and Environment Advisory Committee.
That is correct.
Which we created a few years ago, and you're the liaison to that committee. And so they are recommending that we take this to the next step. I certainly would support that and, you know, encourage anybody interested on this topic to come to the public hearing, and we can all learn more about it.
Okay, great. I would offer to Bob and Debbie, I mean, there's a lot of information. I forwarded you guys a lot of information about this, but if you need some additional information, deeper dive, we'd be happy to do that, Mark Valentine, myself, and members of his team, we'd be happy to do that. Comfortable with moving forward for the 5th?
Absolutely, from what little, I guess I know so far on the topic, it seems like good material. I would certainly support that.
Okay, excellent, then we'll prepare, we'll make the modifications, have Dick give it one last review, and we'll have a resolution for the 5th. And then, again, there's the advertising period, we'll see where we can best slot that in as soon as we can to get that up before the board. All right. Would someone like to make a motion of approval to move forward with that public hearing?
I'll move.
I'll say Dave.
Okay. I'll just ask, any additional questions, board, that you would like answered at this time? And I would just ask staff, I got part of the staff, but they're indirectly involved with this, not 100% directly involved, but I would ask staff any additional.
Just for the board's information, I'm looking to set a public hearing for another application coming into you because of the deadlines regarding the advertising, as you mentioned a minute ago. The earliest I could do it would be March 4.
Okay, all right. So it looks like a resolution for the 5th of February and March 4. That was that one item that you and I and Mr. Horowitz were talking about, that in order to meet the deadline dates, March 4 was the earliest.
So you're looking at March 4 as the public hearing?
That is, that is correct, the formal public hearing.
You probably, you said you had additions to make, this, I just wanted, this was local law you crafted for 2019. I assume you still want to update that, it would say mid-2020.
So I got my little marked-up copy. I knew that there was going to be somebody, I knew there was going to be somebody, so this is hot off the press today.
I just wasn't sure we were going to start it.
Yep, no, it'll be, it'll be local law number one of 2020, and with a few other minor changes.
Great.
Okay.
I think it's going to be local law number two.
Oh, you're going to, you're going to budge ahead?
Well, no, you and I moratorium.
Yeah, you're going to budge ahead, so we'll make, I'll make, you have one more yet modification, so it'll be local law number two versus local law number one. Okay, so I think we can live with that. All right, see no further discussion, we will proceed. All those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? All right, you'll see it on the agenda on February 5. Okay, there being no further business come before the board, the January 22, 2020 work session is hereby closed at, do I have a time from somebody, please?
8:28.
8:28 PM. And I'll just ask the board, I have one short executive session matter on one legal item. That will be just very short in nature, and we will conclude the evening and the day. So thank you for everyone that participated, thank you to Penfield TV, have a great evening.